Good morning Birmingham. This is the regular meeting of the Birmingham City Council. Today is Tuesday, July 8th, 2025. This morning, our invocation will be delivered by Elder Cedric King, Assistant Pastor of New Direction Ministries Church. And our pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilor Hunter Williams. If you're willing and able, please stand.
Let us pray. Father God, we come to you in the name of Jesus. God, as we stand in here in these hollow halls, God, we ask you to be God over our lives first. God, we came to your name, the praise and the glory for this time and this moment. God, as we are here, God, direct us, lead us. God, as in all you have for us to do on today. God, as those who have council people are here, the mayor and those who are serving under them are here, God, lead them and guide them that will help the communities, God, will help the city, God, in the name of Jesus. God, as we come to impact those, you impact us. God, as we come to help guide those, you guide us. God, as we come to direct others, you direct us first. Because, God, you are first. You are the last. God, we come to tell you thank you for this time, this moment. Let today be a great day, an impactful day, a leading day that will change the lives of the citizens of Birmingham, Alabama. And God, we give you name, the praise and the glory for all things you have done. It's in Jesus' name we do pray. Amen. Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, could we please have a roll call?
Okay, Councilmember Abbott.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Present.
Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Smithman.
Good morning.
Good morning. Councilmember Tate. Councilmember Williams.
Good morning.
Councilmember Woods. Good morning. Council President Pro Tem Alexander.
President here.
Yeah, Council President O'Quinn.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Council, before us, we have minutes of the March 4th, 11th, 18th, and 25th from 2025. If there are no additions or corrections, we'll consider a motion to approve those minutes.
Hold it in favor and let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, saying nay.
Those minutes are approved. The minutes for the April 1st, 2025 through July 1st, 2025 are not ready. This time, we'll have communications from Mayor Woodfin.
Mr. President, good morning to you. Good morning to the entire council. It's good to see all of you this morning. It's two days in a row. I think we should maybe attempt to make tomorrow a third. But it's an honor to be before you this morning and provide some updates related to our community. We start with this Friday, which is Full Truck Friday. The community is invited out right here from the short 20th, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And we wanted the community to join us as it relates to the theme around Park and Recreation Day. We spent so much time talking about our youth, your sports, youth activity and mobility, but we want to encourage our adults, not just city employees, but the community, community-wide, city-wide, to engage in more mobility and moving and recreation as it pertains to their health, not just physical, but their mental, emotional health as well. So come out and join us this Friday from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. for a significant amount of activities and, of course, a little bit of fun. I want to also talk to you all about BOLD. You all have supported BOLD for a significant amount of years now. We want to share with the public that the proposals are open, to receive proposals open for the 2026-2027 BOLD Funding Program year. As you know, BOLD stands for Building Opportunities for Lasting Development. And what it does is provides financial support to organizations dedicated to advancing economic development within the city through initiatives focused on five key areas. The first is small business, two is workforce development, three eliminating barriers, four creating place making, and the fifth is high-growth industries. Happy and proud to say with your support over the last seven years, BOLD has directly contributed $5.4 million to 57 local organizations throughout our city focused on those five efforts. And the program was recently allocated again because of your support and approval, Council, 1.5 million in this fiscal budget that started July 1st. And so the BOLD program, as you know, is devoted to helping local businesses and organizations craft effective proposals by offering technical assistance, workshops, and support during office hours. So for those interested in learning more, we encourage you to attend the WebEx that will be held Thursday, July 10th at 2:00 p.m. Again, there will be a WebEx this Thursday, July 10th at 2:00 p.m. And you can visit birminghamal.gov/bold. Again, that's birminghamal.gov/bold for additional information. Throughout the last few years, Smithfield has had some street art walk. On Saturday, July 26th, the city of Birmingham, in partnership with local artists, cultural stores, and community stakeholders, will unveil the Smithfield Public Art Walk, which is a vibrant, walkable outdoor gallery celebrating the neighborhood's past, present, and its future. Spreading key corridors in Smithfield, the art walk will feature large-scale murals, storytelling installations, sidewalk poetry, and augmented reality experiences that immerse visitors in the spirit and stories of the historic community. The event takes place from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. that Saturday, again, that Saturday, July 26th, and is open to the public at no cost. Just a note again, this initiative is a collaboration between the City of Birmingham's Department of Community Development, Innovation and Economic Opportunity, Create Birmingham, the Birmingham Civil Rights Institute, and neighborhood partners committed to using art as a tool for healing, history keeping, as well as community investment. The Smithfield Art Walk project is part of the $50 million Choice Neighborhood Implementation Grant from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, known as HUD. The aim is to incorporate public art and storytelling in the development of over 900 affordable housing units across Smithfield, Greymon, and College Hill communities. And for more information, we encourage those who want to learn more or participate to visit createbirmingham.org. Again, that website is createbirmingham.org. We closed out the World Police and Fire Games this past Sunday. I want to start with thanking this council for your unwavering support over the last few years, getting the bid, as well as all the pre-work that was required for multiple years leading up to this successful event. Over the past 11 days, 8,700 attendees from 72 countries. Again, 8,700 attendees, policemen, firemen. 72 countries converged on our city for the 2025 World Police and Fire Games. And it was an amazing event that yielded 3.4 million views on social media, but more than that, you had these police officers and firefighters in our city with their family members going into our grocery stores, purchasing everything they wanted, including beer. Thank you. They were all in our restaurants, eating, purchasing more alcohol. Thank you again. And they visited so many of our local cultural amenities, from the Civil Rights Institute to Barbara's Motorsport, to Vulcan, to the Birmingham Zoo and Botanical Gardens, and so many other cultural amenities I don't have the time to name, but they really fell in love with the city of Birmingham. It wasn't only because of the not of you and your hospitality, but the city of Birmingham, our own police department, led by Chief Michael Pickett, who I think we were praying every day that he wouldn't hurt himself because he was attending so many and participating in so many games. Excuse me. Along with Chief Cory Moan and the Birmingham Fire Rescue. Their leadership team, as well as the men and women of BPD, as well as BFRS, just showed out. So I'm grateful for their participation in putting it on for Birmingham. I want to thank so many other people, though. I want to thank the Public Works. I want to thank all the other city employees. I want to thank all the vendors and the sponsors and the folks who've made it a success by financially contributing. And I also want to thank the city employees and see all other cities who helped participate. And then my favorite, I want to thank Kathy Boswell. But it takes the entire enterprise to make an event like this happen, and we appreciate you. And so we want to give you, if it's okay with you, a very condensed version, a recap video of what took place during the World Games over those 11 days. So I just want to say, if you notice the gentleman in the jersey that had number one on it, I think that was a young man by the name of Michael Pickett, who threw the dodgeball, won a game with that throw. So Birmingham won everybody on zero. Counsel, that concludes the mayor's report. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm extremely proud of Birmingham for, you know, the World Games. Got to see several different events. Probably one of my favorite was seeing boxing at the Alabama Theater. When those curtains opened, I wasn't sure if I was watching a play about boxing or actually seeing boxing. But, you know, one of the things that I also really enjoyed about it, of course, there were people competing at a very high level. And if you have any doubt about that, you know, I saw a female weightlifter deadlift 400 and over 460 pounds and set a world record in doing it. But, you know, there were a lot of other athletes, including Chief Pickett, I think, who probably played dodgeball competitively for a medal for the first time. And it was great to see, you know, especially our folks so amped up out there and, you know, just the camaraderie. You know, just that alone was so worth it to me to see our employees, you know, competing together and engaging in an activity that I'm sure will create lasting memories. And they're already talking about Perth, Australia. So just all around a great, great event. And I'm sure, you know, there are a lot of people who came to Birmingham and, you know, just didn't know Birmingham, didn't know what to think, and are going home with a really positive impression and telling all the folks back home about Birmingham, Alabama. So all in all, just a tremendous week, tremendous 10 days for the city of Birmingham. Counselor Smithman.
Well, we went to the host appreciation dinner last week. It always makes you feel good when you hear positive feedback about your city towards the end of 10-day, I think it was 10 days, 10-day competition. They said everybody was pleased, no one had any complaints, they thoroughly enjoyed themselves. And honestly, just to see, because I went to see three-on-three, you know, Birmingham Police Department and Iraq, you know, having fun, making dunks back and forth, you know, taking a picture with everybody's flag, like, that's the type of international unity we need. It's bigger than just the United States. Like, it really came together no matter what country you're from. We were here playing the games and honoring each other. And I think with everything that's been going on, the way that the police and firemen were loved on was so very important because nurses, police, firefighter, there are a couple of careers where they don't get a thank you. And I think they felt really appreciated, you know, about these games. And I was really impressed. These are super athletes, like, what was it, the ultimate firefighter with the tower? Like, that's impressive, like. But I did want to shout out Chief Mitchell. I know he doesn't like when we do that. Because for him to have gone to Canada, see that, and, you know, I'm gonna praise him at how intelligent he is and how he and Don Lupe, the way they effortlessly, you are a smartass, the way they are able to put on these events, like, I feel like unless some things went wrong, it went smoothly. Like, you know, because you see this in Canada, like, oh, Canada can do this, but Birmingham, and, you know, I just really want him to know that his hard work doesn't go unnoticed, and that he did a great job.
Counselor Woods says speech.
Yes, he does need to give a speech eventually. But, you know, I was happy about that, and, you know, this was great, and I hope this puts Birmingham on the map for other sporting events. So I'm really proud with this administration, this council, the way we have really transformed the identity of Birmingham from maybe being a sports town to being one of the premier sports towns. So thank you.
Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to agree with everything my colleagues have said and also just kind of point out what a big boost and important boost this was to international tourism because from all accounts, it's really down in our country. People aren't visiting the U.S. from other parts of the world. And so this couldn't have come at a better time to really give us that tourism boost to our economy. So we can kind of boast having a lot of international tourism compared to probably everybody else in the country right now. So, very cool. Thank you.
Counselor Williams.
Yeah, and I wanted to add to that, you know, there was a long time that Birmingham could not pull any of this kind of stuff off, from the World Games to World Police and Fire Games to so many different things that we've done. There was so long that we could not pull this off. And we figured out how to partner with Jefferson County, the state of Alabama, and the Convention and Visitors Bureau, which we all equally gave to this event to make it happen. And I think before, you know, a lot of the 10 of us were up here, everyone was trying to do their own thing in a silo and nothing got done. We, you know, we talked about a dome stadium for my entire lifetime. We've talked about so many things, whether it's a capital infrastructure item or events like this, that we have not been able to get done in a silo. And now that we are able to partner with the state, with Jefferson County, with the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and with the BJCC, you know, we are the ultimate economic development and tourism team. And so I think that it's important to note that, you know, Birmingham is not working in a silo. We're working with our friends and partners in both economic development and tourism.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. I just wanted to, one of the things that we heard at the dinner also was that there were, did they say a thousand EMS calls?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So there were a few folks who went home limping. So, you know, rest up, get well soon.
No, this, piggybacking off what Counselor Smithman said, and in lieu of Counselor Woods' request being denied by Chaz Mitchell himself, I'm not giving a speech. I do want to publicly thank Chaz Mitchell, as well as the entire incident command team. You know, they got their feet wet during the World Games. So their ability to operate this over 11 days without one major incident, without one public safety issue, without a hitch, operations, facilities, and everything else that I'm not able to say, they did it every day, and they did it, they did it very, very well. So thank you, Chaz Mitchell. And please tell the team to say thank you as well.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'll read our statement on the conduct of business. All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. All items on the consent agenda will be announced by reading the item numbers only. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member or the mayor requests the item be removed from the consent agenda. Additionally, a citizen interested in addressing the council with respect to an item on the consent agenda designated for public hearing may request the item be removed from the consent agenda to hold the hearing on the item. Any items removed from the consent agenda will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. For remaining matters, all matters of permanent operation will be read and all public hearings will be announced. Mr. Clerk, could we please read through the items on our consent agenda?
Okay, our consent agenda for today starts on page three. With items five and six, please remove item four from the agenda. It's being requested to be withdrawn. On page four, we have items seven, eight, and nine on consent. Page five, items 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14 are on consent. Page six, items 15 and 16 are on consent, and we have two addendum items.
Item number four is being withdrawn. Counsel, do we have any removals or additions to the consent agenda? Item two added to the consent agenda? Okay. And without objection, I'd like to add items 17 and 18 that are our addendum items. Okay, all right. So we'll actually discuss item 17. Item 18 can stay on consent. Okay. All right. We do have a public hearing item that's not on the consent agenda, so we're ready for a motion on the consent agenda.
Some of second.
Mr. Clerk, we're ready for the vote.
Okay, one second, please. And the second was by, I can't, okay. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
So the consent agenda is approved. And counsel, forgive me, I omitted our presentation, so without objection, we'll suspend the rules for a brief presentation from Rebecca McWilliams, Executive Director of the One Place Metro Alabama Family Justice Center. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to present to you all today. It's nice to see some familiar faces up here, and I'm here to give you an update on the state of domestic violence in Jefferson County, Birmingham City, and then also the role that One Place Family Justice Center is playing in addressing this public health and public safety issue. Before I get started, I do want to just jump on the train for Chief Pickett and say that we have really been so thrilled and grateful for his response to domestic violence and understanding the role that this issue is playing into overall public safety in Birmingham. So we are really grateful to have him and his team as a partner in the work that we're For those of you who aren't familiar with One Place, we are a family justice center, and we are dedicated to serving survivors of domestic violence with a comprehensive, coordinated, and client-centered care. But more importantly than that, we're working with our community partners to address domestic violence with a coordinated community response and to make sure that not only are survivors receiving the support they need to engage in the system, but that we're working with our community partners to also hold offenders accountable. Before I get started, I do just want to address the fact that statistically speaking, at least one person in this room, whether you're sitting in front of me or you're behind me, either you've experienced domestic violence yourself, or you know someone who has. And that's a really important thing to note because this is a really difficult topic, and I want to be mindful that there are people in this room who might be affected by this presentation. One thing I also do anytime I start a presentation is start with a grounding for the people in our community to understand where we are and what One Place is trying to do to change the narrative around domestic violence. So many of you have probably heard somebody say in conversation, "I just don't understand. If it's that bad, why doesn't she just leave? Why don't they just leave?" Well, we're working to change that conversation throughout our community. There's a lot of reasons why people don't leave. I think one of the most important things, you can look at the very top, it's in small font, and it should be bold and in larger font, is that leaving is the most dangerous time to leave. In fact, 70% of domestic violence homicides occur when someone is planning to leave or has just left. So while there's a lot of reasons for why people don't leave, the first thing we need to be doing is saying, instead of using the word "leave," what if we change that and use the word "escape"? Why doesn't she just escape? Why doesn't he just escape? That sounds really different, because it is. Because with domestic violence, it is escaping. So instead of asking the question, "Why doesn't she, he, or they just leave, just escape?", the question is, "Why is the abuser continuing to engage in this behavior?" But more importantly, what are we doing as a community to create systems and laws that help survivors escape safely and rebuild their lives? Counselor Williams, you were talking about working in silos. And what can get done when we're all working individually versus what can happen when we work together with community partners, with nonprofit agencies, with our governments, with our law enforcement, with our courts, with our prosecutors? When we all come together and work together around an issue, like you said, Counselor Williams, we can get a lot more done and really make effective and meaningful change. So a little bit about One Place. For those of you who don't know, we are a family justice center. We are one of about 150 centers in the country and one of three in the state of Alabama. We are what is considered a best practice by the Department of Justice. are what is considered a best practice by the Department of Justice, and we are the coordinated community response to domestic violence. When you look at where family justice centers are in regions, you will see that there are declines in domestic violence homicides versus an uptick in parts of the country where there are not family justice centers. And the key to that is the coordinated response and the working with multiple partners to address this issue. Here at One Place, we were started in 2014. We are now celebrating our 10th anniversary as a 501(c)(1) nonprofit. We're the third in the state of Alabama, as I'd said. There's one in Montgomery, one in the Shoals. We are in a new building as of the end of 2021 over in the Lakeview and Avondale area. Our mission is to provide coordinated services to victims of domestic and sexual violence through a multiple disciplinary team working under one roof. But more important than that, and something that's not written in a mission statement or a vision statement, is the idea of a coordinated community response to address this issue. And it really is a significant issue that we're dealing with in Jefferson County and particularly in Birmingham City. We have a lot of partners that we work with, both onsite, our building, and offsite. You'll see the Birmingham Police Department logo displayed prominently. And that is because Birmingham City Police Department is one of our strongest partners. Your officers are literally driving people, they're driving victims to One Place for services. We had somebody walk in to one of the precincts recently after being strangled by her husband, and she asked to have the charges dropped. And Sergeant Heather Campbell said, "I'm taking you to One Place." And she dropped her at One Place, and this victim stayed with us for seven hours while we worked with her to get her to a better place, where she was willing to continue to move forward in the process. We're in a public health crisis, in a public safety crisis, when it comes to domestic violence in Jefferson County and Birmingham City. When you look at the big three reporting districts, Birmingham, Hoover, and the Sheriff's Office, we're seeing 12,000 to 14,000 calls related to domestic violence for law enforcement support annually. That's just three. Our municipalities don't always speak to each other, so there's a lot of data out there that's missing. And remember, these are just the people that are calling for help. Annually, in the county, we see about 1,200 protection from abuse orders issued annually. As of this morning, we've seen 723 petitions filed. So we are way ahead of where we were last year. You can look at that as a good thing, maybe more people are seeking help. Or you can look at it that maybe there's just really an uptick in violence. Either way, it demonstrates that this is a serious problem in our community. The District Attorney's Office for the Birmingham Division, on an annual basis, they are prosecuting 400 DV felonies a year. This is just the Birmingham Division, and 400 misdemeanors that the Sheriff's Office is sending to them. Most of those DV felonies are strangulations. Birmingham Municipal Court, as Mr. Baskier can attest, and these are statistics that he gave me, they're getting two cases a day sent to their office, 65 to 70 a month on average. And it's really important to note that these misdemeanor cases that are coming to them do not represent the full extent of the problem. These are just cases where law enforcement was called, and then the victim followed up to get a warrant filed. We also know that a lot of our homicides that are happening, they're starting at the misdemeanor level. The good news is that last year, for Jefferson County, we did see a decrease in domestic violence homicides. We were at 28, and in the years past, we've gone from 40 down to 28. While there's no way to know for sure, again, that correlation of a family justice center existing in the community could potentially be tied to that decrease. Of those DV homicides, there's a couple that really stick with me. One was the child who was killed by her mother's ex-boyfriend, who shot through the window last summer on Juneteenth. That woman had actually had a protection from abuse order, but ended up dropping that case. And the key to being effective advocates in the work that we're doing is if we can keep victims close to us, feeling supported, they're more likely to engage in the system and stay attending the court, pressing the charges, testifying in court. This woman had dropped her protection from abuse case. We don't know what happened to her. Another homicide that sticks out to me is a woman who was killed, she was missing in the South Side. I don't know if you all remember this last summer. It turns out, the day before, she had returned from a camp for women and people who are dealing with traumatic brain injuries. Her traumatic brain injuries were caused by the domestic violence that she had experienced. And our partners at the Alabama Head Injury Foundation, who reached out to us because of the number of clients that they're getting who have traumatic brain injuries as a result of domestic violence, they shared with us that she had attended their camp and the very next day was killed. The woman who had gone missing and was killed when her shoe was left behind last spring, that happened in Birmingham City. The offender had multiple DV charges against him prior, and she was trying to leave. And then the one that sticks with me the most was a call I got from Sergeant Campbell after responding to a DV homicide in Inglewood. It had found a victim, she was wrapped in a carpet and had been strangled. And she was in tears, said she'd never seen anything as horrific as what she saw that day. These are the cases that your Birmingham Police Department are responding to, and these are the cases that we, as a family justice center, want to help prevent. These stats are kind of hard to see. These are some statistics that I got from Birmingham Police. I have numbers for 2024 through 2025 as of July 1st. But it's important to note that, as you know, the BPD systems were down for a lot of 2024, so I would not see that this as comprehensive. But when you're looking at the last year and a half, we know there were at least 8,000 calls for service related to domestic violence. And what you really want to pay attention to are the number of DV strangulations. And it's probably hard for you to see, but in a year and a half, nearly 400 strangulation cases have been that Birmingham Police have responded to. And the reason this is so important is because strangulation is the largest indicator of a victim eventually being killed by their abuser. When I asked Sergeant Campbell, distant passing, "How many strangulations are you seeing in a week?" She said seven to 10. We know that men who strangle, and men who strangle and own a firearm, are the most dangerous men out there. They are the people that kill cops when they respond to domestic violence calls. They are the people that commit mass murders, and they are the people that are killing their partners. It's really important to note that domestic violence is community violence. And in research that we've done through One Place, through Danny Carr's office, shows statistics in 2021 of all known homicide offenders in Jefferson County, that's somebody who killed anybody, 74% of them had a history of DV before they committed that murder. There's a high-risk team that Danny Carr has placed at One Place of prosecutors and investigators and crime analysts, looking at trends and looking for offenders that have a DV history that they see are at a high risk of not only committing a DV homicide, but also violence in the community as well. And I'm really grateful to DA Carr for prioritizing domestic violence because he understands the tie to community violence. I'm trying to be mindful of your time. I have a lot to say. But the work that we're doing is meant to help survivors stay engaged in the system, work collaboratively with our law enforcement, with our prosecutors, and with our other community agencies to hold offenders accountable. If we're not holding offenders accountable, victims are less likely to stay engaged in the system and are more likely to stay in relationships, continuing the cycle of abuse that we see with domestic violence in children. So at One Place, we're providing direct victim advocacy and a coordinated response. We are providing navigation, walking alongside victims for as long as they need. We're out in the community, sharing the word, so that the more people that are aware, the more they can seek services. We're working on systems change. In fact, right after this meeting, I'm heading back to my office where we have several judges. We have BPD coming, the Sheriff's Office, someone from the U.S. Attorney's Office, where we're looking at, how do we create systems to make it really hard for offenders who have protection from abuse orders against them or criminal DV charges? How do we get them to relinquish their firearms when we are in an no-see state? How can we work with the courts to hold offenders accountable, to create compliance hearings? How can we work with the Sheriff's Office to prioritize the service of protection from abuse orders to high-risk victims when the offender is not behind bars and that victim is not safe? And then finally, we have our program for children called Camp Hope, a year-round program that's designed for children who've been exposed to domestic violence, abuse, or other family traumas, to provide monthly events and a week-long summer camp that we're going to in three weeks, that provides childrens with pathways to hope and the ability to see that their life could be different than what they've experienced. We would have loved to have that young girl who was killed in our program. And most of the kids that are in our Camp Hope program are Birmingham City residents. So this is the work that we're doing, and we can't do it alone. We need the support of all of our agencies and all of our local governments as well. Any questions?
Thank you. It's an important reality check. Thank you for being here to share with us this morning. I'm reminded of a quote by Frederick Buechner. It goes, "Here is the world. Beautiful and terrible things will happen. Don't be afraid." And that's a part because of folks like you at One Place Metro Justice Center. So thank you for the work that you do. Also want to thank DA Carr and U.S. Attorney Prem Escalona for their advocacy at the state level for legislation that would provide some protections in these cases. I want to just put a pin in one of those statistics that you mentioned, that of the homicides that occurred in Jefferson County, 74% of the perpetrators had a history of domestic violence. So, you know, putting those folks behind bars before they have the opportunity to commit a homicide would, you know, literally save lives. So, again, thank you for being here this morning, providing us a reality check, and telling us about the important work that you guys do. Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for bringing this to the fore, and nice to hear from you again. I was just thinking about root causes. And, you know, I appreciate the opportunity to become more trauma-informed as we see, you know, so many things go on in our society. And I was just, you know, AI is my friend, so I was just looking up what the root causes are. And I don't know if you might, you know, add to your community presentation some of the drivers so that people understand the conditions that drive it. Because, you know, one of them is the perpetrator's exposure to violence as a child. And so it does strike me that, you know, we do have to support victims and, you know, prosecute these crimes, but also, you know, the perpetrator is likely to continue these patterns and, you know, with other victims. And so we used to have something called Project Safe that worked with perpetrators. Do we still have that, Mayor? It was a police department program that worked with perpetrators of domestic violence to really help them with anger management and try to disrupt that pattern. Because that piece, I'm just wondering if anybody out there is...
You're absolutely right. I'm never gonna, I'd love to put myself out of a job, and that's never going to happen unless we address the people that are causing harm. And it has to start with healing. When we're looking at it from an offender prosecutorial perspective, there has to be some way to keep our victims safe. But at the same time, we would love to see more happening in our community to address that harm. Camp Hope is a very small piece of that, where we're trying to put people into this program that are at high risk of becoming an offender one day. But what are we doing with all the people we're not reaching? What are we doing with all the children that are witnessing and experiencing domestic violence? What are we doing with the offenders today that are causing harm? I can say that Judge French, the presiding judge, has really taken an interest in revamping the batter's intervention program and taking it away from an anger management call-in program, because it's really not anger management. People who are abusive aren't just going around attacking everybody. It's very targeted. And so that's more of a, why do you feel a need to control somebody with harm? So it's less of an anger management approach. So she has revamped that, and that has been a project that she's been working on. And then Judge Kane is one of the new judges who is overseeing the misdemeanors in DV court. And she has started a monthly group that we are attending, that Offenders Alumni Association is attending, some researchers at UAB, to see how can we get and support offenders so that they don't continue to offend. She's looking at things like drug counseling, job opportunities. You know, at the end of the day, everyone needs healing. And I don't know the answer to that, but I would love to see that be more prominently prioritized for the offenders.
Yeah. And, okay, and I appreciate that. And you all work kind of like a quarterback, working with a lot of different service providers and the navigational pieces. So if there were more services for perpetrators, you would probably be the one who would know what those are.
Yeah, there's really not much.
And I love that the camp potentially works with children who've been exposed to violence to try to, you know, prevent them from becoming perpetrators of that violence.
Yes.
Anyway, thank you for what you do. And I'm just wondering if, like, you know, SNAP benefits ending, like, is there going to be this uptick, you know, as people, you know, because economic pressures tend to be a root cause, too. So just...
Yeah.
I don't know if you'll be out of business anytime.
Doesn't look like it.
What I fear, but, thank you.
Counselor Tate, or Counselor Smith?
Thank you, Counselor Tate. You know, this topic hits a little bit home, just because I know quite a few people who have been through domestic violence. So it's a little different. And then working in domestic violence clinic in law school, working with clients, and you're working to get them a PFA, and they go MIA on you, and you're like, hey, working to get them a PFA, and they go MIA on you, and you're like, hey, where did you go? And they were like, oh, I got back from my boyfriend or husband. And, you know, that's, I'm not gonna lie, that was a little discouraging, because you're working so hard, you know, to help them get out of a situation. When they go back, you're like, dang, was my work in vain? But it was a good satisfaction that as a 301 student, I was able to get a girl younger than me a PFA against her husband. I think they got married like 17, 16. They were really young. But, you know, the thing about it is with perpetrators, a lot of times it's a personality trait, you know, because it doesn't matter what income, because there are rich people who are abusers, poor people, middle class. I really would love, and I want to work with you on this, the strangulation laws. It is so hard to prosecute a perpetrator when they strangle somebody. The person almost has to be dead or close to dying for them to even prosecute it. And I really would love to work with you, and I'll start with Megan's Foundation, on our colleges and high schools recognizing unhealthy relationships, because there are red flags in relationships I think our youth and our young people don't recognize that can get to that point before it becomes abusive. And I would love, I'm not calling out the men on here, but, you know, Mayor Whitson, the male counselors, if there was like a male summit where men could come together and talk to each other, talk to the younger men, and be like, hey, you don't have to put your hands on her, or hey, this is a better way to manage my anger, or hey, this is what happens when I'm in my marriage, and, you know, my wife is nagging me just a little too much, but, you know, I learned how to walk away. And I think if we have more men, because women do it, too, men more accountable with other men, I think that would help as well. Sorry, this is long. One of my stories is that I saw my college best friend, I saw her boyfriend do little things, and it made me feel uncomfortable, and I was only 20 years old. And, you know, at the time, he was a friend of the guy I was dating, and I didn't feel comfortable telling him that. End up finding out he really abused her, like would drag her hair down the stairs. I mean, it was abusive. And I think, you know, if we tell people it's okay, if you see something, say something, then I think that would help with domestic violence. But I do agree with Counselor Clark, mental health. A lot of them have mental health issues, drugs. And I wish there were harsher penalties, because a lot of times they get slapped on the wrist, and then they go back and abuse them.
That's really one of the issues, is a lot of strangulation cases are, they get pled down to a misdemeanor, and because it's the first time. Well, it's never the first time. It's the first time the victim called the police because they were scared enough, this time to think that their life was in danger. A few things, people always go back as part of the cycle, not always. On average, it takes someone seven times to leave a relationship for good. We have clients that do that. One day, we had two clients come back on the same day after going back. Our doors always open. One thing that we do that is a best practice is conduct a lethality danger assessment on every person that walks through our doors. And we share the score with that client so that they can know the amount of danger that they're facing, and empowering them with that knowledge. On strangulation, what we want to see and what we want to be working with Chief Pickett on, and I know Mr. Baskier's really interested in this, too, is that we have a citywide protocol for how first responders are responding to calls when a strangulation is involved. So in a best practice, we want to see where any time there's a strangulation call, that that victim is sent for a strangulation exam, that EMS is called, that we're able to document, and that reports are being done correctly. I will say that about 10 years ago, the laws did change so that the DA's office will prosecute a strangulation as a felony, regardless of if they lost consciousness or lost the ability to breathe. It's just the intent. But we also don't see that happening. Not all municipalities are necessarily following that.
True.
But regardless, we are seeing that, we are seeing a lot of these felonies get pled down. And just to your point about educating, kind of that, the man-to-man, Mayor, I've recently been meeting with Uche Bean to address what she's doing with the boots-on-the-ground work. And she has a lot of interest in us working with her and her team to be able to respond
That's good.
on the scene and working with the, not only the victims, but also the offenders in that moment.
Yeah, because I know men, actually, who are actually victims as well. So it's not only talking about you doing it, but also still reporting it as a man, because, you know, a lot of the violence, isn't it a little bit more, what's the statistics? I feel like men, is it man experience maybe a little bit more?
One in three women, the statistics on men are, they vary a little bit. They absolutely do experience abuse. And at One Place, we serve, we serve men, women, all genders, all sexual orientations at one place.
Okay. Well, if there's anything I can do, any programs, any schools, please let me know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Tate?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. McWilliams, I want to commend you on the work that you're doing, and DA Carr and all your partners, working together collectively to eradicate this issue. Just want to kind of piggyback on some comments that my colleague said, and particularly what Counselor Clark stated, like the root causes. I just want to kind of offer this up and lift this up as well. You talked about healing, like how do we engage our practitioners that are restorative justice-trained and incorporate, you know, this into the work as well? Because, you know, again, we got to get to the root, what is causing. And at Camp Hope, it is hope for everyone, and really dig deep and do a deep dive. I think a lot of times when I've seen restorative, you know, work done, when Van Jones did a segment, taking individuals who had harmed people and taking them inside of institutions to talk about the harm and that forgiving process started. And so I think we probably need to tap into the restorative practitioners. I think Carol, the young lady named Kimberly, that you know that does restorative work?
Yeah.
The yoga teacher, Yoki?
So, yeah, tap into, you know, the restorative practitioners that we have, probably not in Birmingham and around Jefferson County. So if I can be of service, as Counselor Smithen has stated, I can give you a name of some people that I know that's restorative, that are restorative practitioners.
Thank you. There are some family justice centers across the country that do have programs set up for families that want to stay together. A lot of victims, they don't want to leave. They just want the violence to end. And so there are some models that provide for that. It's certainly something that we are open to. We, you know, we're still relatively small. Of our $1.1 million budget this year, about $600,000 of that is private philanthropy. We have a good amount of federal funding that is really at risk. And thankfully, and I appreciate Counselor Woods for advocating for us to receive some ARPA funding this year. But other than that, we do not get any city funding or county funding to do the work that we're doing. So as we think about how can we serve and grow, you know, those are conversations and questions that we're always asking ourselves.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. We'll now continue with our agenda items. I want to take item three out of order. We have some folks in the audience who are attending for that one. So, Mr. Clark, item three, please.
Item three, in ordinance authorizing closing 20th Avenue South to vehicles or traffic access at a point approximately 190 feet from its intersection with Richard Eric and Junior Boulevard South. This is the first reading, so ordered to pass today. I need you to see.
Motion for unanimous consent.
Counselor Member Abbott. Counselor Member Clark. Counselor Member Moore. Counselor Member Smithen. Counselor Member Tate. Counselor Member Williams. Counselor Member Woods. President Protem Alexander. Counselor President O'Quinn.
All right.
I motion on that.
I move the item.
Any discussion on this item? Counselor Clark?
What sort of barrier will we install to block the flow of traffic?
It's, yeah, Counselor Abbott?
It's a gate.
A gate?
Yeah.
Metal gate.
In the street? Just a gate on the street?
Yeah, a gate across the end of the street where it abuts the new car wash.
Okay. Will we ever do anything more attractive and permanent than that? Or is that gonna be what we do forever?
Mr. President?
Mayor Whitson?
Forgive me. We have a team member in route. You took it out of order, so I wasn't expecting them to be available, but they're en route. We're gonna get to that question if anybody else has any additional questions. I know this is a first read, but...
Yeah, I think the gate will be effective. I'm just thinking it's not, you know, real aesthetically pleasing.
It's hard to make that area aesthetically pleasing.
Well, they have something that we don't have. I don't think we have anything in our packet.
The Department of Transportation provided a rendering, and it's a white metal gate. You know, it's not wrought iron or anything, but it's a pragmatic... Director Fowler?
Good morning. My name is James Fowler. I serve as the Director of the City's Department of Transportation. And could you please repeat the question?
So Counselor Clark was just asking about the aesthetics of this metal gate?
Or just what were we going to install to keep the traffic from, you know, moving through this intersection? And if I was told a gate, and now I'm about to see the gate, so I'm just wondering, is that a long-term solution, or do we plan to evolve this into something else?
So, yes, ma'am, I apologize that this wasn't included in your packets. This is what was distributed to the neighborhood and was taken to the neighborhood meeting. So you'll see on the second page, just a real simple style of gate. The city is paying for the gate, and so at this time, this is what we were proposing. We had not contemplated something more significant. But it'd be a real simple style of, you know, metal gate. There would be a lock on it that the fire department would have access to. And additionally, just want to point out that there'd be a side path that pedestrians and cyclists could use. So the street is not closed to everybody. It's just to vehicles. And there would be appropriate signage to warn drivers of the closure.
Okay, so emergency egress would be possible even with this in place? So fire apparatus can get through?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Williams?
Well, I'm obviously in favor of doing whatever we need to do to protect this neighborhood. But, and I think we should pass this today, and if this is what we're gonna throw up, then let's throw this up, go ahead, throw it up there. But I do think, you know, in my district, there was, the city of Mountain Brook, several years ago, wanted to put up a much more aesthetically pleasing gate that was actually siren-activated, so it would allow emergency vehicles to come and go through there. But, you know, I think that, I think that we could look at something a little bit more complex, maybe down the road, that was a little bit more than, you know, a farm gate. But, yes, we, I definitely think that we need to protect this neighborhood from the car wash.
All right. Okay. Just want to recognize all the folks from Redmond in the audience. We have heard from you a bunch of times, gotten all your emails. We're with you, and we're about to prove it. So, Mr. Clark, we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye. That item is approved. All right. Back to item one, please. Counselor Abbott?
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I just wanted to thank everyone for coming today. I'm sorry you had to wait so long, but it's worth it. And if the gate is not beautiful enough, we'll put some flowers around it. Thank you for coming.
All right. All right, Ms. Clark, item one, please.
For which one? I didn't see anything about it. Okay. Item one, a public show-call hearing to consider the matter of revoking a business license issue to Happy Hour Hangout. Motion, please.
Move the item.
Second.
Okay. It's been motioned in second. This is a public hearing item, so I'll turn it over to our Public Safety Chair, Counselor Tate.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was alerted by the attorney that she could not be here on today with her client, so I am asking for a two-week delay on this item.
Okay, it's been motioned properly, second, and we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose.
Okay. Item two, please. Or, I'm sorry, item two was on consent, so we'll go to item three. That one was passed. Seventeen, item seventeen is next.
Item seventeen. In ordinance declaring a local emergency effective July 8, 2025, due to hazardous vegetative overgrowth throughout the city of Birmingham caused by excessive rainfall, unauthorized to merely engage private contractors for emergency cutting, suspend certain notice requirements for properties, opposing imminent health and safety risks, direct city agencies to respond quarterly. Emergency period shall remain in effect for 45 days unless extended or terminated by the council. Motion, please.
So moved.
Clark and Smithen, discussion on this item. Counselor Clark?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I had a couple of questions from yesterday that the mayor suggested that I bring forward today. And chiefly among it, because I don't feel like it was, at the time we talked... Okay, you need to do something else.
Okay, we'll come back to it. Go ahead, Counselor Clark.
Yeah, so yesterday, when we talked about it, we weren't looking at the actual document. And one of the questions I had was about, you know, a lot of the cost that we incur is administrative burden. And so, you know, without the due process of noticing and the period to cure and all that other administrative stuff that would normally give us the authority, then we got to go back and administratively assess the liens and all that. So, you know, will this give us a break from that administrative, well, some of it. I know we'll still have some administrative process of tracking what we're doing and bidding and so forth. But because there's no due process to the person where we notice them and give them a period to cure, I'm thinking we should not assess them, because they weren't given notice and an opportunity to cure. But it's not clear, you know, whether we would.
So Mayor Whitson can respond, but, you know, one of the things that, and it was a long discussion, and lots of details came up yesterday, but I'd venture to say, and I think Mayor Whitson pointed this out, that the majority of these cases are chronic cases that are on our re-abatement list year in, year out. And, you know, on many previous occasions have been noticed and probably already have multiple liens on them.
Yeah, I'm not concerned about the notice. I'm concerned about the assessment.
Understood.
Given, because we don't recover those. And, I mean, our recovery rate of those is pretty low. And in this case, we would not be doing that normal process. So would we be assessing, or would we not be assessing, I guess is my ultimate question?
No, we will not.
We will not be assessing. Okay. And the only other comment or plea I want to make is that the goal be clean and green, not clean and brown.
Yeah, well, so...
Herbicides.
I think that requires, uh, that's not a very short answer. I think in the immediate issue what we're doing, let me answer the question, changed my mind. It's not clean and burnt. Yeah, however, we, we, we do have to talk about getting past this emergency moment. We have to talk about what we do year in and year out. You, all of your colleagues, love to say, and I love to back you up by publicly echoing your sentiment. We're not in the grass cutting business. To an extent, if we are, it is our city right of way. It is our city parks. It is our city facilities. It is our other city-owned properties that may include some city-owned lots. And then separately and apart, the land bank for their properties, which are not managed by us, is managed by the land bank. That being the case, uh, we have a very unique issue and burden that no other city in the entire state of Alabama has. They have them, but not at the sheer amount we do. Right, the sheer amount, the volume is overwhelming. Uh, more than thirty-five hundred have already been assessed this year. Uh, you and I both know, and your eight colleagues know, it's way more than thirty-five hundred. We're talking maybe minimum ten thousand. So even with the three million dollars you've all approved that went into effect January, I'm sorry, July one, a few days ago, you know, three million won't cover ten-plus thousand. And even if it did, we wouldn't get to it more than once in one fiscal year. As I've been, you love to say that yearly as well. And the truth is, as hard as that is to accept, that's not our responsibility. Well, here's our responsibility. Investigate, walk down, walk down, track who the owner is and hold them accountable for their private property that has become a public nuisance. It is sickening the amount of absentee and slum lords we have who don't take care of their property. And we get all the heat, we get all the anger, we get all the frustration. And if we weren't assessing and if we weren't bringing them before you weekly, I could... It should be on us, but we are. This is one of the things you talk about code enforcement. The one thing I can say on these properties, they do their part. They, as in the city employees, do their part year in and year out. But I also wanna acknowledge in the situation we're in with the last two months of the significant amount of rain we've had. Twenty-one days in May, twenty-two days in June, we've never been in this predicament either. The vegetation state, uh, the public nuisance state, I mean, even our ability to control and wrap our homes around what we're responsible for, we're overwhelmed. But we have to, in this emergency situation, provide some expedited relief to our citizens, particularly our seniors and elders who live next to these lots because of rodents, uh, because of snakes and other forms of things we believe are now in a state of a public emergency. This is not anything we would abuse or come before you every year. But the truth is, long-term out, we gotta do something differently. This is one of those situations where whether it's begging, whether it's pleading, whether it is, I don't care what it takes. The state of Alabama is going to have to assist the city of Birmingham in holding these private owners accountable for their property. We are excited about the new foreclosure lien law that passed. We're grateful for our legislators to get us to that point. That'll come before you sooner than later, about the next step to that. That's, that is one tool in the toolbox. The biggest tool we can add is if we put a lien on that private property, because we have to use your public tax dollars to go on that private property. We want our money back. But there's something, we want more, that's important, more importantly than that. We want you to do your part and take care of your property because it's not our responsibility. And your neighbors shouldn't have to live next to that. So before you, it's something I rarely do. One is an addendum, two, it's an emergency, which I haven't asked you for, I think, since COVID. So we're very judicious of how we, when we request this of you. We need to expedite getting that three million dollars out as fast as possible. We need to add on new contractors as fast as possible as well. That's still a legal process that we can't skip. Uh, but if you need to know the process publicly, Chad Mitchell is here to share with you. The last thing I will say is this, two things, actually. One, for reference, since January one, I told you this, I think, two weeks ago, but it's word publicly repeating. The PEP contractors, just this year, since January one, have already cut almost seventeen hundred private lots to be exact one thousand six hundred and ninety-one. Uh, private property owners, because we've done our part, gone out, investigated, assessed, put the stake in the ground, let them know your property is now a nuisance. If you don't rectify it yourself, you have to appear before this body. We have had four hundred and twenty-six of them to own up to cutting their own property. Department of Public Works since January one has cut ten thousand seven hundred and forty blocks. And they will continue. This is what they do, this is their job. And I'm grateful for Josh Yates and Ms. Roder and the entire team at Public Works for busting their butts to help keep our city clean. Four thousand thirty-six acres have been cut. And then city lots that we, that we own, one thousand ninety-nine of them have been cut this year. I'm not gonna let anybody tell y'all, I'm not gonna let anybody tell this body, we're not doing our part. But the majority of these private lots, like the super majority, like ninety percent of them, plus, we do not own. And it's our responsibility to assess, but it's not our responsibility to keep cutting private lots because we have to use those public tax dollars for public right of way, sidewalks, streets, alleys, lights. And every time we take money, it no budget to go on private property takes away from our responsibility. So, need your help today, and I'm grateful for your time, grateful for yesterday. We can talk about this as long as you want.
Council Abbott?
Well, I would like to ask if the hazardous vegetative overgrowth that we're going after, we're not going out to mow people's yards, we're going out after things that are three or four feet tall. Is that accurate? And places that have become so overgrown, you can't walk through them anymore?
It is very accurate. Can't walk on the sidewalk, it's overgrown on the, on the senior elder home. Um, it's literally high up to your knees or higher, yes, priority.
And we're not going to use herbicides on those lots after we cut them, right?
No, that was, actually, she used a synonym, but yes, burn, no, we're not.
Carol is much more kind than I am. Um, foreclosure on the liens? Do we have the ability to foreclose on our liens? Or do we need help from the legislature to do that?
So the answer to your question is yes, yes, and yes, I think. It's like a three-part, at least two-part question. We have a lien process. We use it every time we go on private property. We struggle to collect for years because that same absentee owner who won't take care of their property, they don't, they're not only thumbing their finger at their neighbor, they're thumbing it at us too. We've worked with the legislators for years, and shout out to the legal department. See several, several of them here in the back, um, along with Ms. King. Um, they worked in conjunction with our Jefferson County delegation, I think Senator Madison Coleman has taken the lead. And kudos to her and the legal team, and shout out to you all for championing this. But we finally got this session that just ended, uh, ordinance, uh, for lien, for closure lien bill passed. It then required us to do our local part to create a ordinance. Good news, the ordinance is complete. At some point, we'll be able to get it before you, um, at a meeting that works for you. Uh, with that said, that's going to accelerate our ability to get more aggressive with these people. Uh, and I'm calling them these people, the slums, the absentees, 'cause I'm really tired of them, y'all. You gotta be tired of them too. The person that really deserves to be tired of them is the neighbor who has to live next to it. We got some of them that live in Homewood, Mountain Brook, Pleasant Grove, and other cities right here in Jefferson County. Some live as far away as Washington State because Council Tate and I've had to call one. I wanna be honest, I don't necessarily want us in the business of taking people's property who don't do their part 'cause I'm kinda, I'm trying to get some of our portfolio off of us, right? But they gotta own up to their responsibility. And if this is a tool, I'm all for it. But there's a tool that I have more desire for. If we put a lien on your property and you don't pay us, my personal opinion, and I hope you can share this, is if you go down to DMV to renew your, um, license, or you go over here to the park to renew your tag, you can't get it 'cause it should be treated as a failure to appear, in my opinion, no different than in criminal court. All right, what's more important, the person running the stop sign and can't renew their license 'cause they failed to appear in court? Or the person they got, the person, the absentee slum person, that year after year after year after year will not take care of their property? That's the type of tool we need. That'll change the game. One, we'll get our money back. 'Cause you're not getting that license till you run us our money. But the other, I think they'll be proactive and voluntarily do what they're responsible for, which is take care of their property.
Well, I think that that would be our number one thing we would want our lobbyists to help us with.
Say the word.
Because that is something that has been costing us millions and millions of dollars, and we recoup so little. And as long as I've been, I'd, I'd hate to calculate up what the last twenty-three years and seven months have cost us in cutting other people's lots. But I would think it would amount to enough money to pave all the streets in District Three. And probably a few in District Six. I mean, you know, it's just, it's pitiful what we're saddled with because of the, um, actions of others who don't live here and don't give a hoot about Birmingham. A lady complained to me last night at the Glen Iris neighborhood, the house next door had burned down. Okay, the owner, he said, "The city can't touch me." And he's left the burnt house on the property. I just think we ought to show him that we can touch him. Reach out and touch someone. And I, I, I got, I've got the guy's name that I would like for us to reach out and touch. But it's just, this is an issue for all of us, you know? District Three is certainly not spared. We just don't have as many demolitions as other neighborhoods have. So there's not as many overgrown wooded messed up lots. But I'm all for making that number one on the list, and of course, I won't be there, but everybody else will.
Text me that name and that address.
I will. I have some funny stories to tell about him.
Council Clark?
Um, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. President. And Mr. Mayor, to the points we're talking to, um, I just wanna offer two, uh, points. In my private life, uh, my other work, we are studying the effect of heirs' property on Birmingham. And I think in addition to the absentee bad actors who neglect to care for their property, many properties are in a legal limbo, as you, your code enforcement, the land bank, everybody knows. These properties, um, are owned by, you know, heirs of someone who died without a will. And need, none of the owners have the full rights to really benefit or, you know, the full rights of ownership. So it's a bad investment for someone to take care of it and not own any more than the other heirs or have the rights to, uh, clear the title. Um, so we think that this is a silent killer of neighborhood in a way that, uh, especially black and brown wealth erodes in communities all across the country. So we think something, uh, really at crisis proportion has happened here. And so we're gonna look at quantifying and seeing how we can intervene programmatically on neighborhoods that are still stable to prevent them from going the way of other neighborhoods. So that's one thing. And another thing I wanted to just note is that, you know, the land bank was never meant to be everything. It was, it was really needed to be a, a title clearing machine so that the properties could be put back into use. Um, another strategy that communities use, and I think has been talked about, but I don't think we've really, it hasn't really galvanized into anything, is community land trust so that, you know, the communities steward the land and, um, make sure that there's gonna be permanent affordability in the redevelopment of that land. And so I think that's just one of those strategies we need to look at more seriously to see if we could, uh, create models for community stewardship of vacant land in a more formal process that could be sustainable. I know Ryan, I remember Ryan and I were in the session at the NCRC conference, and he was going, "Yeah, this is what we need in Birmingham." But see, you didn't come back and make it happen. But anyway, uh, just wanted to bookmark that point 'cause I think it's, we got, we need some more strategies for keeping land clean and green and stewarding them until, um, some catalysts happen. I think that as the Housing Authority redevelops communities, that'll be a catalyst in that neighborhood that might make that neighborhood uplift and, and the market conditions be more ripe for some of those lots to be reused, so, just a thought.
All right, thank you, Council Clark. Council Moore?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I know yesterday we had the, uh, committee of the whole meeting, um, and Chad was able to, or Chief Mitchell was able to kinda share, uh, information about individuals who wanted to service vendors. Um, I wanted to know if, you know, since he wanted to do a speech earlier, if he would be willing to, uh, share information about how those individuals can, uh, get in touch with the city and work with the city on being able to execute this.
Yeah. Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
So once this item is passed, we'll start the process of doing an invitation to be our RFP for vendors to apply through our purchasing department. The RFP will have a list of, uh, regulations of, um, making sure they have a business license, everything that's up to date, uh, insurance that'll be on file, and they have to submit the type of equipment that they will use to do the weed abatement. So once that's completed, which it, it will be a quick turnaround, we plan to open it open for at least thirty days, and then we'll be able to select the, the vendors to, um, be able to do the weed abatement in these, these areas.
Mr. Mitchell, can you tell him a, a process that's just closed or we added, or just added some additional ones as well?
Uh, yeah, so it's, it's like the one that's on item number eighteen, that was for the parks. So we did the same process for the parks. And the reason behind that is that because once we have new vendors that can do the parks, that alleviates DPW from coming off of the parks and going back into our community. So that's kind of one of the formulas to thinking out of the box things that we're trying to do.
And Chief Sparks, can you add the, the new play of the blitz, explain them in detail? 'Cause I think the public needs to know that as well in the council. What I'll do, as he's getting ready to talk, my commitment is communicate with you and the public daily where we will be. We will not be able to get to every neighborhood really, really fast. But what you will see is daily receipts of where we are so people can know we're moving, um, in blitz. And it won't be one area, it'll be multiple areas of town.
Right, so, Mr. President, councilors, there will be multiple phases, but we're marshaling all of the city's resources to, uh, the various areas in your district at one time. So, um, so that will be the resources of public works, planning, engineering, and permits, land banks, land bank, and all of the contractors, and then for park and recreation, the parks within those areas. Um, the mayor's talked about the sheer volume. We, we really do need all of the resources collapsing at the same time. So we'll be providing you all, and the, these departments will be providing you all with updates with where they'll be so you can share it with the citizens as well, so you'll know where they are and where they're gonna be coming.
Thank you, President Alexander. Oh, I'm sorry, Council Moore?
Well, I thank you for sharing that process and, you know, kinda... Well, I thank you for sharing that process and, you know, kind of clearing that up. Uh, definitely wanted to make sure that that was, you know, said here for the public to be able to hear it. And I love the fact that you're saying that, you know, we're gonna marshal all of our resources to do this blitz in one area. As we stated yesterday, you know, it's also a great opportunity for us to go ahead and, you know, engage our neighborhood associations in our communities, um, as well as Magic City Tool Bank, so that they can also, uh, be in lock and step with the city as well. And so I know that the city is going to be handling those areas that are four feet and, you know, like just extremely overgrown. Um, but I think it's a great opportunity as well to just clear some of those other areas that can be maintained by, you know, residents or churches or even business owners. Like, I think that this is something that everybody needs to be involved with because this is not something that, you know, the city can handle on its own. Like, everybody has to play a part in, in lifting, uh, in lifting this, so.
Mr. President, to your colleague's point, Councilor Moore, thank you for lifting it up. Look, the truth is, as, as large as three million dollars sound, it really doesn't, it, it's only so much it can do, okay? But I want to co-plead with you to the public, uh, the, the tool bank that you mentioned. You all have platforms, people listen to you, they trust you. Uh, this, this issue is front and center for your residents, so I'm just telling you, I know it is. Um, I personally drove through Woodline, Baby Kingston and Kingston yesterday, so I saw with my own eyes. We did make it to Eagle Note, but some other team members did. We know how bad it is. We know a significant amount of that is heirs' property. And we also know a significant amount of it is absentee owners. With that said, though, there is a plea. Just imagine the individual, um, the company that wants to do some pro bono work, the church group, the neighborhood, um, boys or teenagers. We want everybody to get in on this. You know a senior or elder who lives next to one of these? We just declared an emergency. Help. Like, help, don't wait on nobody. Nobody's coming. Go help the neighbor because they need it, and they need it right now. So definitely help us, use your platform to talk about the, the tool, what your pastors, your churches, and your districts. Owners you know, uh, who got loan companies, all of them, just hit them up. And I think they'll be responsive to you. Look, I can tell you personally, every district is different, but this, this is massive in some, in majority of them. Now, there's four and nine are outliers. But I've told you why they are. Um, these districts, um, since Birmingham was founded in eighteen seventy-one, have had a significant amount of redlining. They've had a significant amount of every issue you can think of, from environmental, uh, to air quality, to, um, building homes and that should have been built, uh, because they were built. And what's the term I'm looking for, counselor about water? Blood lanes, exactly. They were built in blood lanes. And a significant amount of other issues that have existed, including people, significant amount of people not having wills, then et cetera. But what we do know is that those two districts, or than any other district, have lost a significant amount of population through numerous reasons. Whether it's death, whether it's left for another city, or wholesome things, industry leaving, right? The industry in your two districts changed faster than any other non because of all the steel jobs. We don't talk about that. But it's had an effect decades later. And this is one of the things we're dealing with those decades later. Empty overgrown lots owned by people who are not taking care of them. That doesn't mean it don't exist in seven. I know that some of the issues in Poughkeepsie and other portions of Southwest, six other portions of Southwest, and I know you got some areas, Wyoming, etc., one, two, and three have some issues, but they're spotted. But the concentration of them in four and nine is at an extreme level. So I did just want to publicly say that. They're in eight too, by the way.
Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, Pro Tem Alexander.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead. I just had one more note.
Go ahead.
So the team wants to arm me with data, to also arm you with data, to arm our public with data. We've been talking with the GIS team on gathering, um, continued data around this issue. Across the city, I was, my number, I low-balled it. Across the city, there are nearly fifteen thousand. To be exact, fourteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty tax delinked properties.
Fourteen thousand, what now?
Eight hundred and twenty. This, this correlates directly to the overgrown lot issue. You know that's not sustainable, right? You know that's literally not manageable for a city with public tax dollars to engage in fifteen thousand lots every fiscal year. That's humanly not possible, that's financially not possible. There was ever a time where home rule was not our friend? We're gonna definitely need the state to give us a bigger tool hammer to get these folks in line who own these properties. Because we will never be able to, the ten of us will never be able to solve this alone, solve this alone. At our previous normal cutting rates, this would take nearly four to five years to cut, to cut each one of these private properties just one time. It's not realistic. It's not realistic. I am not taking away the frustration, the anger, being mad, worried of the neighbor who lives next to her. I don't want to downplay how they feel. We actually share how they feel. I am as mad as them because I want the person responsible to take care of it. But I also want the resident who lives next to one to know, to know that with your city's tax dollars, we can't take care of everyone. We humanly cannot. And with your public tax dollars, we can't. So I apologize, Madam Pro Tem.
That's okay, thank you very much. While we were discussing this item, I did write down three questions that I had, or, or subjects that I wanted to be sure. The vendors has already been asked by Councilor Moore, so I thank you for that and the invitation to bid and the process we'll have for that. Uh, let me stop first by saying thank you for acknowledging, uh, that we have this problem across the city. Thank you for acknowledging in District Seven. We do have areas, I have some entire neighborhoods that are almost overgrown with these type of lots. So we're very excited to see this process, once we approve it today, what we can do to minimize that. I do want to know what type of rubric or what type of decision tree is going to be used to determine which lots to be cut. And I ask this because we've had a process, um, in the past where we've escalated these concerns to you. And normally in my office, we look at the weed abatement list to give us an idea of what's coming or, you know, what work is being done in our districts, along with in my district, as well as riding out to see that. So that's my concern, just what is that rubric? What is that decision tree? How's it gonna look?
So I'm gonna let Chief Sparks help me with that because he's, he's taking the lead on putting everybody in a room to make sure we can kind of bear hug this issue. I want you to also know before he answers, it will be fluid. It's possible that they're gonna get in there and it will change, right?
Right.
So, one last thing. Because of state law, right? I've, I've expressed this to you, and these, I promise you he's getting ready to answer your question. We all know that state of Alabama, uh, people who own property have a lot of rights.
Right.
What I, what I would hope for, uh, especially from our delegation, but especially from any legislator at any county who's dealing with this issue or could see our burden, and the governor, is that we're at a point where we shouldn't treat everybody the same. I don't think, uh, absentee owner should be afforded the same rights as, uh, the person that's doing their job and responsibility, but they got the same rights. With those rights, even for us to go own private property and use your public tax dollars to go on that private property, it's a minimum of forty-five days just to care, clear a process to get to you to vote on it. That doesn't include the backend days to get it back before the clerk's office, Legal Department and Finance Department to get it to a contractor. Hence why the emergency is needed on top of the eight weeks of this rain we've never had in our city. So people will tell you, "Well, they're doing this because of the election here." Those people can go have several, several seats. I don't care what they say. We've never had this amount of rain in eight weeks, and I just told you on top of that, there's a process of a minimum of forty-five days to get these properties before you that don't include the backend days where it has to clear several departments to get to a contractor to be put on the list. With that said, so I wanted to explain the why in a little bit more detail. He's gonna explain to Ruby.
Yes, ma'am. So, uh, Council Alexander, so it's a few things. As I noted earlier, our, our teams are gonna be collapsing all these individual areas. So I'll break this down by departments and then how they're gonna attack it. So our PEP team is working with our Budget Department, Purchasing, and they're gonna take all of the nuisance areas and assign those to contractors. Um, DPW will do the same thing, and that will be done by DPW employees. So that's what Chief Mitchell was referring to, that when we can assign those to contractors, it pulls our Public Works teams off. Uh, and then our, our Land Bank team will do the same thing. They'll work with budgeting, purchasing, and assign land bank properties to contractors. So of note, we, we aspire to have sixteen contractors. Three thousand five hundred eighty-three of those properties have already been declared a public nuisance by the council. They're just waiting assignment. Um, and so particularly for yours, of that three thousand five hundred eighty-three, and we'll have this breakdown for each of you, one thousand three hundred and forty-five are in yours. So we'll be assigning, um, contractors, and well, a few other contractors to do you all's individual districts. But we'll also have them working from DPW's standpoint, the hundred and sixteen parks, ninety-one major thoroughfares, one hundred and twelve facility grounds that DPW contractors, um, and city employees will do as well. So, um, we'll have eight contractors by Birmingham Land Bank. They'll collapse on nine hundred and seventy-seven properties that are held by the land bank in the target areas. So for all of your information, most of the areas have already been declared nuisance. Um, and what they've done is broke those down by districts to collapse on those areas first.
That's very helpful because our advocacy will be maintained through proper notification. I think each of us have networks within our neighborhoods that people will want to know as this process is being done. And just the third thing. What is very frustrating is when someone says, "I sent this out to my Beham three-one-one," or "I sent it to three-one-one a year or two ago, and nothing's ever been done." Will this process help to kind of minimize a little bit of that or help manage those expectations?
Yes and no. In the next, in a very short window, if this council approves what's before you, fourteen thousand eight hundred something will be declared in one time. Excuse me. The no part is I'm not sure how the city governor with public tax dollars can ever get to fourteen thousand plus empty lots that we don't own. Fifteen thousand almost. I understand that frustration. And here's the deal, I know if you're tracking the budget, every year we've increased the funding to some in cases issued, but I, I don't know how much more we can increase it to absorb because ooh, I mean, the problem. Even if you put the money in one fiscal year, we just told you, we still couldn't even cut every one of them in one year. Even if you had all the contractors in the world. I, I think what we will do, to attempt to do what we do best, really try to go after a most egregious. Now, if they've been on there for a long time, I think we have to make a decision on how we prioritize. And so part of our Rubik needs to be assessing the, some extreme outstanding cases versus what the last two months have done to those already extreme cases, which I think can be up top. The good news with the blitz, if we see it, and what you all declaring today via vote, we'll handle it.
Thank you.
All right, Councilor Tate.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Mayor, I also want to commend you as well because I know that you and I worked on the, um, Twenty-Sixth Avenue, Twenty-Sixth Street, North Caraway Boulevard at the one-stop, um, store that was in, once an encampment of unhoused individuals. And you ran a lady down in Washington State, which she did a very good job at keeping it up. And also with just recent, the Sunco on Finley Avenue. We were able to track that owner down who's now placed no trespassing signs. But I also worked with the Salvation Army to have, um, Mr. Stamps, um, his team to go out and clean the lot up. You know, but to Madam's President, um, of Pro Tem's point, it is very sad because when you do talk about these, these, what I hear a lot, people know who own these lots. Like, when you go and people are saying, "Well, why this lot's not being cut?" Like, I got hit with that just a week or so ago. You and I talked about it, and the guy said, "Well, I know who owns both of these lots." And so it is really not fair to people in neighborhoods. You know, you know who own these properties, and people are just not doing what they need to be doing. It's not fair, you know, that, you know, the city has to, um, maintain or, and as you stated, you know, taking somebody's property, that's not, you know, what you want to do. But people should be accountable and responsible. You know, you just walk away, leave things, and, you know, make this big fuss about, you know, what anybody's not doing. And the truth of the matter is, we are doing what we are elected to do. I know with news you can use it. I sent out, you know, to the constituents in pass, I took constituents, we provided a big abatement list every month. My team goes through that abatement list and, and we're providing that information in real time. So again, thank you because again, just last week, I downed the street from my house. The Alithia House owns property down there where it's overgrown. And, you know, I've taken photos and sent it up and, you know, told the, the gentleman that, you know, "We're gonna get it turned in." And, but I think that Chris Retan needs to be held accountable, you know, for those lots that he owns down there that, that are truly overgrown. So again, thank you, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. President, you know, what I'm about to say, there's some people agree with it, and some don't. Some will admonish me, but it's gotta be said. We go through our normal process of walking people down who are absentee owners who own their properties. But then we find in particular that they live on, they live in other cities in Jefferson County, on a very pretty street, and they maintain their own lot. Or they are a commercial business or a small business owner and their property's taken care of, their home and everything. We're just gonna publicly start sharing, "Have you seen this person?" Because we need you. All right? Now, I just said it the nicest way I could. But I think you know what I'm referring to.
Yep. I want to encourage people to use the GIS mapping system, uh, either the city of Birmingham or Jefferson County. Uh, you can find the contact, you know, at least an address for the, the property owner, uh, or a registered agent. So like Council Abbott said, feel free to reach out and touch them. Mayor Woodson, I did want to ask you, uh, about the number of days, um, for this emergency declaration. The declaration, the, the ordinance says we receive the state's, uh, forty-five days. If, you know, we need additional time to, um, accomplish what we want to accomplish, the council, I assume, will have the opportunity to come back and extend the declaration.
Confirmed with the Legal Department, yes, sir.
Okay. Any additional discussion? Mr. Clerk, we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose.
All right, that item is approved.
Thank you.
Need to come back to item three. There was omission in the agenda, so I'll make a, a motion to reconsider item three.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye. All right, so item three is before us, um, so. Yeah, motion second.
Okay, item is before you.
All right, so that, um, the public hearing notation was omitted from our agenda. So item three, we should have given the, uh, public an opportunity to, uh, comment on that, that ordinance. So, um, we'll do so at that time. So if we have members of the audience who would like to speak for or against item three, we'll inter- um, we'll entertain those comments now.
Good morning. Nice to see you all again. I'm Susan Barnacastle. I live at twenty-fourty-four Twentieth Avenue South and have been a forty-two-year resident of our home. And I came to thank you and, uh, and for your support and appreciation for the much-needed gate at the end of our street. I will be very brief and specific. I was trained by John Kirkland, and those were his favorite words. If you've got something to say, use brevity with specificity. So, I thank you, and I appreciate your support.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, I am Trish Porchwees. I'm at nineteen-twenty-three Twentieth Avenue South. I am the third house directly behind the, uh, upcoming car wash. So, I am in complete favor of having this gate, um, since the car wash is coming and it's now out of our control. So, I appreciate y'all kind of voting for this, um, and, you know, we don't want to have that three hundred cars per hour coming down our side street or having them parked in front of my property where I can or cannot get out of my driveway when it's a nice, beautiful day and everybody's in line for a car wash. So, I appreciate that. And just a side note, so, um, I'm one of those, I was a local organizer for the World Police and Fire Games, so I appreciate y'all doing that. Um, I put on, or helped to put on, uh, the half marathon, which was the last day. So, um, I, I can appreciate all the stuff that you guys did and saw, and I want to just say back to you guys, I was able to interact with a lot of the athletes because we had to do packet pickup, and they were like, Birmingham is so friendly. Um, they were just amazed at how friendly the people of Birmingham were during the whole venue and event time, so, and they were, they too were very interesting to chat with and, um, very communicative. And also a shout out to Sergeant Becky White because we had some encounters, uh, the day before for the half marathon where, uh, we had to reroute the course because of the train in the way, so I want to give a shout out to Birmingham Police Department and Becky White, uh, that helped support us and make our athletes stay safe out on the course. It got a little stressful on certain aspects, but anyway, just want to give you that feedback, um, uh, since I was one of the local ones that actually helped to, uh, organize the half marathon on the last day of the event. So, thank you again for the gate. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you. I'm John Barnacastle, twenty-fourty-four Twentieth Avenue South, and thank you, uh, kind of an aside, I spent thirty-four years in education, more than thirty years in special education. We lose a case on procedure or due process, so I thank you to come back and do, do the public hearing. Won't belabor the point, we, I've been here before, they've all been here before, we appreciate it, the reasons, uh, as everybody else has stated. One thing, that's the diaper row area, for those of us old enough to remember that, after World War II. Uh, fifteen, twenty years ago, my wife was one of the last ones with a clothesline still up, and the news did an article on her. So, again, thank you, thank you.
All right, appreciate it. Don't see any more public speakers, so we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
All right. That covers all of our agenda items. Uh, time for our announcements. Counselors Smith and...
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, the south to this field neighborhood will meet today at five-thirty PM at Holy Family. Arlington West End will meet today at six PM at West End Library. Uh, and West End Manor will meet on Monday, July fourteenth at five PM at New Hope. The next Budget and Finance meeting will be on Monday, July fourteenth. Submissions are due tomorrow by noon. And then the Saturday, we will host our, uh, July Summer Farmers Market. We will have free barbecue, free watermelon, and we will actually have line dancing. I know Council Table loved this with Desi, um, and then a free inflatable for kids, and then we will have the five-dollar vouchers as well. So, come out this Saturday from one-thirty to three-thirty at Memorial Park. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Counsel Smith and Counsel Abbott.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I want to thank everybody on the council for that gate. That was a big deal, even if it's not as pretty as it needed to be, and even if, you know, people wanted it to be mechanized and all that, but, you know, just to not have all those dump trucks come down your street is a good thing. Uh, announcements for District Three today, uh, the Planning and Zoning Committee meeting for July ninth is canceled. Neighborhood Association meetings tonight, East Avondale meets via conference call, and Highland Park Neighborhood meeting is canceled for the month of July. If you have any concerns or issues, please call three-one-one or download the MyBham three-one-one app, my favorite app, better than shopping, and, uh, you can send photographs of your issues, you can send commentary, just like you want it to be worded, and you can do anything you want anonymously, or you can put your name out there and say, "I turned this in." So, you can be private if you want. And we're asking all residents of District Three to please continue to visit our website for all the additional information that we get on a weekly basis, and that's my B, that's us, excuse you, www.bhamdistrictthree.com. And I hope everybody had a nice holiday weekend, and now we're back to work.
All right. Thank you, Counsel Abbott. Counsel Moore?
Thank you, Mr. President. Kilo Springs Neighborhood Association will take place today at six PM at Smith Middle School. We have Northeast Lake Neighborhood Association that will take place tonight, uh, at six PM at the Southern Museum of Flight. Uh, Penfield Park will also take place tonight at six PM at the Brownsville Heights Community Center. Uh, we will also have, uh, on Monday, the Inglewood Neighborhood Association that will take place at five-thirty at the Inglewood Rec Center. Uh, Airport Highlands, uh, will be at Pleasantview Baptist Church at six PM on Monday. Uh, Woodlawn will actually have their Neighborhood Association, uh, as well at six PM on Monday. Uh, and Roebuck will have their Neighborhood Association meeting on Monday at six-thirty PM, um, at the East Precinct, uh, Birmingham Police Department. Uh, let me see, this month is, or the month of July is Park and Recreation Month, so join us all month long as we celebrate the people, places, and programs that make our community stronger, healthier, and happier. Whether you're hitting the trails, joining a fitness class, dancing at Food Truck Friday, or exploring one of the one-hundred-and-nineteen parks, there's something for everyone. And so, they have a list of different things that will be taking place, uh, Friday, July the eleventh, uh, they will have the Food Truck Friday with Park and Recreation that will take place at Lamb Park, uh, in Short Twentieth Street, uh, from eleven AM to two PM. On the, uh, on Saturday, the nineteenth, they will have the Magic City Games, so Birmingham's CrossFit Competition will take place at Legion Field, uh, at two-fifteen PM. Uh, and then on the twenty-fourth, uh, which is a Thursday, you'll have the End of Summer Camp Fun Day, um, Summer's Last Ride. So, go out to Legion Field, uh, and enjoy that. Uh, wanted to also announce that there are, uh, two current vacancies on the Birmingham Land Bank Authority Board. Uh, the description of this board is to bring blighted tax delinquent properties back on the active tax roll, which is very fitting, uh, seeing as how we had a very, very long discussion today in this meeting, um, about those. And so, this is a seven-member board, uh, the term length is four years, you have two term limits, um, and let me see. All directors must be residents of the city of Birmingham, shall not be an elected official. Uh, the mayor shall be the only elected official eligible with expertise and experiences and careers or activities involving real estate, property management, finance, real estate law, transit planning, residential contracting, banking, architecture, or city planning. So, please make sure that you, uh, go to Granicus, is it, Brother Frazier? Yeah, for them to be able to apply. Yeah, so you can go to Granicus, uh, uh, and apply for that. And then last but not least, I wanted to give a shout out to, um, this being Woodlawn Alumni Week. So, the biggest, the largest, um, they have their alumni associate or their alumni week that's taking place, uh, this week, so we got a lot of, uh, Woodlawn High School alumni in town, um, and will be having some different events. Uh, they got an opportunity to, um, enjoy, what was it, the karaoke with Ricky Smiley, uh, on yesterday, uh, at the Woodlawn Theater. Uh, tonight, they will be at POB Platinum of Birmingham, doors open at five PM. Uh, uh, tomorrow, they will have the Classmates and Cocktails Block Party at Jazz on Fifty-Fifth Street at six PM, uh, which is always a good turnout and a good event. Um, we also have the Woods Rodeo Rollout at Skate Two Eighty on July tenth from seven PM to eleven, July eleventh, Cigars Under the Stars, All-White Affair, event taking place at Haven, nine PM. Uh, and let me see, the Alumni Picnic, which will take place at Woodlawn High School on July the twelfth, uh, from eleven to seven. Uh, so, y'all make sure, y'all come out and kick it with the biggest, the largest Woodlawn alumni. And that, that concludes my announcements.
Thank you, Counsel Moore. Counsel Clark?
Thank you. In District Eight, we've got a few neighborhood meetings before next week. Uh, the Central Park Neighborhood is meeting Thursday at six PM at the Five Points West Regional Library. And then on Monday, we've got Tuxedo Neighborhood meeting at five PM at the McAlpine Recreation Center. And, uh, later that same evening, Ensley Highlands Neighborhood will meet at True Love Church, um, of Ensley at six PM. And typically, the Rising West Princeton Neighborhood also meets that night. Um, I'm trying to confirm that they're also meeting, uh, that evening at six at the Rising West Princeton Center. Um, you know, we've heard a lot of congratulations for the World Games, and Kathy Boswell sent us the nicest note, and it just warmed my heart and just reminded me that she's one of my favorite little she-ros, um, in town, and, you know, really got a lot, you know, her feet a lot wet with the World Games and, uh, was now, uh, playing a central role in the police and fire game. So, just a shout out to Kathy Boswell for her, uh, energy, her love, and her resilience because she is, you know, she's just a beacon of light who has endured so much, uh, tragedy in her life. Um, also want to just, um, point out something that District Eight is hosting. Uh, we're going to host a screening of the Almost Lost Story of Tuxedo Junction on Friday, July twenty-fifth, so save the date. It's going to happen at the Holy Family Enrichment Center, which is formerly the Holy Family High School gym. It's at six PM, and it'll be a little prelude to the function at the Junction that happens the following day on Saturday, July twenty-sixth. So, uh, just, you know, stay tuned for more details. And, um, I just want to also point out a Woodlawn event. This is for the, uh, the Southern Music Research Center is presenting a fundraiser on Saturday, July nineteenth at the Woodlawn Theater from seven to ten PM. And if you don't know what this is, it's a really vast online repository of all this rich music history. Of course, there's a jazz component, which has got me hooked, but it really just documents all kinds of music, um, and it's an online archive. And so, if you know people related to Southern music history, you will probably find some information on them there. Uh, Bergen Matthews, who's a former English teacher, has done this, and he's now trying to sustain it. So, um, if you want to come out, you can hear Sarah Lee Langford, Will Stewart, Hurricane Elaine Hudson, who's a District Eight blues singer, uh, and DJ Case Quarter. So, that's again Saturday, July nineteenth at the Woodlawn Theater at seven PM. Finally, just want to note that, uh, the Five Points West Library is in full swing with their free and cool youth programming. See Science Come Alive with special guests from the McWayne Science Center in a presentation called Lights, Cameras, Science. That's happening this Thursday at ten-thirty AM. That concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Clark. I want to just, uh, thank you for your mention of the, um, the show with the Woodlawn Theater. I am a big fan of Bergen Matthews, uh, The Lost Child radio show that airs every weekend on Saturdays in the morning on Red Mountain Radio, and then in the evening, uh, on WBHM. One of the, the coolest things happening in Birmingham, in my opinion, right now on the music scene, uh, so, um, definitely encourage people to check that out. Pro Tim Alexander.
Much. These are our announcements for District Seven. On Thursday, July tenth, we will be offering again our free Get Fit While You Sit classes, and they are Thursday, nine-thirty, and Friday, ten-thirty at the Roosevelt Rec Center. And on August second, I believe Commissioner Tyson is going to have a large hosting of, um, residents, senior residents who participate in this program, and she'll be inviting them out. I think it's at the Crossroads, and, um, so we'll be giving you more information about that. Uh, the UAB Mobile Wellness van will be at Roosevelt Rec Center on Thursday, July tenth from eleven AM to three PM. So, if you're in that area, please take advantage of that Mobile Wellness van, uh, for, we do not have any Neighborhood Association meetings this week, but on Monday, July fourteenth, the Powderly Neighborhood Association meeting, that has been canceled, so it will not be held, but the Oxmoor Valley Neighborhood Association will meet at six PM in person at the Oxmoor Rec Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Williams.
Thank you. Uh, Roebuck Springs Neighborhood will be this Thursday, July the tenth at seven o'clock at New Beginnings Church. Um, would, um, like to thank everybody that, um, including, uh, everybody that talked about Ms. Boswell and everybody that was behind the scenes to, you know, we talked about our police and fire that, uh, participated, but, and, and obviously Chief Mitchell, who, who, um, despite the lack of smile on his face, did a lot, um, for the games, but I think that there, we, we just, we just had a ton of volunteers that came out. You know, we wanted around two thousand volunteers, and I think we got close to thirteen hundred or something like that. And for a city to come together and thirteen people to, to volunteer for two weeks is, is, um, is pretty significant. So, just wanted to point that out, that we also had lots of citizens volunteering as well. That's all.
All right. Thank you, Counsel Williams. Counsel Tate?
Thank you, Mr. President. Sandeska Neighborhood Meeting is tonight at six PM at the Jimmy Hudson Rec Center. North Prep Neighborhood Meeting is canceled for tonight and will resume back in August. Oakbridge Neighborhood Meeting will be Thursday at four PM, and they meet on conference calls. You can call in by dialing nine-five-two-two-zero-six-four-nine-one-eight, pass code two-two-three-four-one-eight. Hooper City Neighborhood Association will meet on Thursday at six PM at the Hooper City Recreation Center. North Birmingham Neighborhood Association Meeting will be on Monday, July the fourteenth, six PM at North Birmingham Library. The next Public Safety Meeting will be held today at one PM. If you have questions or concerns, feel free to contact the office at two-five-four-two-three-zero-two. Also, Mr. President, I want to mention the Heart of the Farm, Groundbreaking Fountain Heights Farm tomorrow at nine AM. And shout out to the visionaries, Dominique and her husband, so they're going to be doing the groundbreaking on the Fountain Heights, um, addition of the farm tomorrow. So, myself and Counsel Smith and also partners with her, where we were able to extend, um, free produce to be given out to fifty families all across District Nine. Also, finally, with heartfelt purpose, Black Men United alongside World Vision, and Counselor Tate invites you to a free community giveaway, anybody that lives in District Nine, um, to join us for a city of rich, city rich with legacy and resilience as we come together to share essential resources, love, and unity with the community giveaway. So, this is the third time that Black Men United has visited Birmingham, all the way coming from Chicago. So, it's going to be Saturday, July the twelfth, at, from eleven AM to two PM. Location is twenty-one-hundred Twenty-Fifth Court North. That's the Twenty-Fifth Avenue Baptist Church that I want to shout out to Pastor Bracy, who, um, always just don't say no to give me that, um, logistics that I need, and all of the volunteers that help, you know, with traffic flow and all that. Thank you, Chief Mitchell, for assisting me with this event as well, um, getting a forklift out. But that's all of my announcements for today. Mr. President, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Counsel Tate. For District Five, we have several Neighborhood Association meetings over the next week. East Lake Neighborhood Association will meet tonight at six PM at the Household of Faith Church on Division- Church on Division Avenue. East Avondale will meet tonight via phone conference call at six PM. Please contact my office, uh, for that call-in information, that number is two-oh-five-two-five-four-two-six-seven-nine. Wahoma Neighborhood Association will meet on Thursday, July tenth, at six PM at the Southern Museum of Flight. The Gate City Neighborhood Association will meet next Monday, July fourteenth, at four PM at the Marx Village Campus of Hope. Oak Ridge Park Neighborhood Association will meet on next Monday, June, July ninth, uh, I'm not sure, next Monday, let me just say that, Oak Ridge Park, next Monday, six PM, Harris Homes Recreation Center. And the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee meeting will, the next meeting will take place Monday, July fourteenth, at, uh, two PM here in the council chambers. Please contact my office to submit agenda items. I want to remind folks about the District Five Annual Health Fair that will take place on July twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five, from two PM to six PM at Parker High School. Uh, we'll be giving away food boxes, um, uh, adult and baby, um, hygiene products, uh, infant formula, health screenings, um, box lunches, and if you need a ride and/or for additional details to participate, please contact my office at, again, two-oh-five-two-five-four-two-six-seven-nine. Um, want to remind folks also about the two farmers' markets that take place every Saturday. Uh, there's the East Lake Farmers Market and the Pepper Place Farmers Market, um, uh, so check those out. And then finally, I want to recognize, uh, Congresswoman Sewell's, uh, Congressional interns for twenty-twenty-five. Uh, you guys have sat through a long meeting, not even all of us, obviously, make it through the whole meeting, um, but I think you guys got, uh, excellent, um, view in on the diversity of topics that we deal with and the, um, passion and level of detail, uh, that, you know, goes into, um, doing the work of the city. It's not always glamorous, uh, you know, we do make mistakes and have to go back and fit, fix them mid, midstream, um, but this is it, and, um, you know, I, I feel for you. Uh, you know, it's not exactly, uh, entertaining always, uh, to watch someone else do work, but, um, we are working, and, you know, everything that you hear, you know, said this morning, um, are an assimilation, you know, what we out in the community are hearing from our residents, um, you know, the mayor too, um, and so, um, you know, all of the comments that you heard from the counselors today, uh, are informed by countless hours, uh, embedded in their communities, hearing from folks, uh, responding to telephone calls and emails. So even though it's sometimes, sometimes tedious, um, a little, maybe even mundane, this is critical work of making, um, a city function, so firsthand witnesses right there on the second row, um, glad to have you. Yeah, and, yeah, kudos to you for staying awake. All right, and we're not done yet. So, Mr. Clerk, we have some people who have signed up for our speakers list.
Tyrone Richardson. Kenneth Sims. And Mr. Jenkins, Willie Jenkins.
I think little more fast off with drive, zero-four-three-five-two-one-seven. As city council, I just want y'all, let y'all know, we had a wonderful time at Shallow Baptist Church, the men of praise, we sang down there, and we gonna sing at Mount Olive Baptist Church in Kingston, that'll be the fourth Sunday, and as I want to invite y'all to come, the fourth Sunday at three o'clock at Mount Zion Community in Kingston. Also, we had a wonderful time at picnic, Oak Street Baptist Church, have picnic at Oak Street Baptist Church, wonderful time at the picnic, and, uh, we had, uh, water slide, and we had a nice time for the picnic, and Oak Street, the pastor, Irving is the pastor of Oak Street Baptist Church. And also, we getting ready for the Carver High School Day, y'all, the men of, uh, Carver High School alumni, I mean, picnic, uh, uh, picnic, Bobby Gannon, the president, alumni, and we gonna have a picnic. First Saturday in October, invite all the city council to come to North Birmingham Park for our annual picnic, uh, the mighty Carver Rams. I came out of Carver in seventy-three, and we just had our fifty-two anniversary not too long ago, the mighty Carver Rams, and that's, uh, we looking forward to come to the, uh, celebrating to the Carver High School picnic. And, uh, I, I'd like to say, uh, uh, Mr. King, Denise King, Nebbit, she one of, uh, Michael King's sister, one of our guys, same with the men of praise, the Lord says sister law, and I just want to say my prayers go out to her, and also the Gerda family, the Gerda fam, family, Mr. Gerda had passed new, a new beginning in Baptist Church, they done bury him, but I just want to tell the Lord to bury him, and the Lord to be with the family. And also, one of my classmates is a deaf, or what is it, his name is Ricky Kenny, he went to school with me, Carver High School came out in seventy-three, asked the Lord to pray for him, he came out with me in nineteen seventy-three, uh, Carver High School, and he's sick, and, and, um, and I want to let y'all know, we had a wonderful time at Cabin Wood, I mean, Shallow Baptist Church, we sang at Cabin Wood Church, the men of praise, and everybody from Shallow really enjoyed the men of praise. Everywhere we go, we sing, you know, different clean out, and also, y'all have heard, the middle singing, they getting ready to have anniversary coming up pretty soon this year, and, uh, they could sing too, and I just want to let you, just y'all know, we had a wonderful time at, um, Shallow Baptist Church, but we, we reaching out to different churches and stuff, and I would like to say promote, uh, get reaching to the, uh, old Carver High School, I wish they could, uh, do something with the old Carver High School and the neighborhood. And, uh, you know, like I came out of Carver nineteen seventy-three, uh, Carver the mighty, we call the mighty Carver Rams, and I just want to say the neighborhood need be fixing up, especially our old school, and, you know, I don't know what they gonna do with the old, old Carver High School, I wish they could do something with it, make a commu, community something or something with it, it been there a long time, and I wish that, um, they could, y'all could do something, they talking about their old Carver High School, 'cause it been there for, been there for many pretty years, we done lost a lot of our classmates and a lot of teachers, and I mean, a lot of preachers and pastors, but we still holding on, God didn't change the hand, we still holding on. I'm still gonna be that Santa Claus, y'all, still with, still got my suit, I'm be ready for this year, the, oh, yeah, I'll be seventy-one years old, December twenty, be my birthday, I'm getting over up there, y'all, city council, I'm getting over up there. Okay, that's all I like to say.
All right, thank you, Mr. Jenkins.
All right.
And, uh, finally, I want to thank our officers on duty. Mr. Pinkerton's here with us always, uh, thank you, sir, and, uh, Officer Knight was here earlier, saw him in the audience, so thank you guys for, um, being present and, uh, protecting and serving, so appreciate you guys.